To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roke Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderwoman Ray.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Oram is present.
Correspondence?
We have a standardized notice form for a liquor license for Gaborcas Pizzeria and Restaurant.
Received and filed. For the good in city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward, state your name, three minutes.
Good evening, council, Jason Nichman. I am a Middletown community member who has helped write the ceasefire resolution. Just as Newburgh, Beacon, and Kingston council members have passed similarly, we would like this council to pass a resolution that calls on our federal officials to divest from Israel's weapons so that we may instead fund the issues that are on the rise in our own backyard, like the lack of low-cost and supportive housing, childcare, and healthcare. I've shared previously that I've worked as an outreach worker for a shelter in Middletown. With homelessness on the rise in our community, Middletown residents are fed up with the fact that our federal tax dollars are supporting these war crimes instead of our own community. I want to briefly address an important point that Alderwoman Ray brought up, which is that Middletown's council itself is not choosing to send our tax dollars to fund Israel's weapons. The 387,000 figure that has been presented was calculated from taking the annual amount of US military funding to Israel and dividing it by the total households in the US to find the average amount paid to Israel per household. We then multiplied that figure by the number of households in the city to determine the annual contribution for taxpayers in the city through their federal tax dollars. So again, both for the council and for folks at home, it is not the case that this council is writing a check each year for Israel. However, it is the case that when you consider all 30,000-plus Middletown residents combined, together we are sending nearly $400,000 in our federal dollars to fund the same bombs that are being dropped on innocent people. So while it is the case that you may not be writing that check by not passing this resolution, you are choosing to stay silent while our neighboring communities are leading the way and taking a powerful stance by standing on the right side of history and passing this resolution. So what is your role in this? These ceasefire resolutions serve as a way to build pressure on the Biden administration and our New York State politicians and lawmakers. It shows elected officials that their constituents, us, are paying attention to this issue, especially as many local and state seats are up for reelection in November. When you pass this resolution, you are joining part of a grassroots movement in this country that continues to grow in its amplification when people like yourselves in positions of local power recognize the humanity of Palestinians and the urgency of this issue and send a symbolic message to our political leaders, saying, "This community does not stand with the senseless bombings and destruction." People will remember where Middletown stood on this issue. I also just quickly, I appreciate the mayor clarifying that the Ukrainian flag hung downstairs in the city hall was his decision. I would like to know what it will take for you to hang a Palestinian flag. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council members. My name is Steve Swift, and I admit I'm from Bloomberg, but I do all my grocery shopping here and buy household goods, bought a car, Johnston Toyota, and any money left over, my wife spends at Hobby Lobby. I wanted to show you a picture of my dad. My dad participated in the firebombing of Tokyo, March 9th, 1945. It was the single most destructive bombing in history. People think, "Oh, it was Hiroshima, or Nagasaki, or Dresden." It wasn't. It was the firebombing of Tokyo. 334 bombers dropped incinerators and half a million canisters of napalm and phosphorus. There was no public outcry. There was no demand for a ceasefire because the Japanese were our enemy. The Palestinian people are not our enemy. Our government has the power to stop this war with an arms embargo. I've known about this, you know, since I was a young boy, so whenever American bombs and American planes are, you know, whenever that's happening, I'm always saying, "Well, why does this have to happen?" I see what it did to my father. I saw what it did to, you know, 100,000 Japanese people. That's the dead, not counting the maimed. American-made bombs and planes are being used to commit genocide. When you see your child, your grandchild, try to remember that you love them just the way Palestinian parents loved their children. It's no difference. We need a ceasefire resolution to show our government that the people care about this issue. Thanks for your time.
Good evening. My name is Mark Marinoff. I'm actually here tonight not as a resident of Middletown, but as a citizen of the United States because calling for a ceasefire in Israel-Palestine is a universal issue. To say the violence there is no concern of our local municipalities is to purposely ignore or our country's support for it, and worse, it is to silently condone our country's support of it. I am one of a growing number of American Jews who is ashamed and horrified, not only by Israel's militaristic actions, but also by their use of October 7th and the Holocaust to justify them. There is no justification for this level of destruction. Let more and more of my people take to heart that never again is not just for us, but for everyone, and let Middletown, in its small, symbolic way, express out loud that what is happening in Palestine is unacceptable. Passing a ceasefire resolution is the least we can do. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Malad. As a Christian Palestinian American born in the diaspora, to one of the survivors of an Israeli massacre, I take a great pride in my ethnic background. I have made my home in Middletown. I'm going to outline some struggles Palestinian prisoners faces. One of the main reasons of the Al-Aqsa uprising was to uplift the injustice against Palestinian civilian prisoners. Every time we propose a ceasefire, they want to focus on the 250 hostages, while purposely ignoring the 9,200 Palestinian prisoners, including men, women, and children, who are being tortured to the extent never seen before. Even in death, there is no freedom from Israeli prisons. According to the Palestinian Prisoners Club, Israeli authorities are still holding the bodies of 17 Palestinian detainees. The bodies of Anis Dawla detained in 1980 has been kept for the longest time, over 43, 43 years. The remaining 16 has held from 2018 onward, with some detained after October 7th. The number of detainees journalists also reached 56, including 45 who have been arrested after October 7th and are still in detention, including four female journalists, according to the same source. The prisoners' club indicated that 250 detainees have died in prison since 1967, including 16 after October 7th, including some detainees from Gaza who Israel has forced to disappear. Israel torturing Palestinian prisoners to death with US complicity. Omar Al-Aqsaan is a Palestinian teenager freed in a prison exile during the week-long truce, and he said Abu Abus was beaten to death in custody. Omar accounted he was tortured because a question he asked the warden, whether there was truth. Then he got beaten to death. One of the released prisoners told the story about former prisoners who was stripped naked, put face down to the ground, then tied up his hands and legs apart, and let the guard dog rape him, with other prisoners watched, being told, "Your turn coming." And other gang rape videos went viral on the web. Israeli chief military rabbi said soldiers are allowed to rape non-Jewish during wartime. The convicted war criminal Netanyahu is seeking regional war, which means we are sending the troops to defend Israel. These troops are going to be our loved ones that might not come back. Passing ceasefire resolution is not only helping to stop the genocide against oppressed Palestinians, but also protecting our loved one from dying, protecting psychopathic fascist regime. If you are a true friend of Israel, you should pass ceasefire resolution, not worrying about being flashed this anti-Semitic card because the path Israel is going will lead to its destruction. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, council members. My name's Amanda Crump. I live in Middletown on the 4th Ward, and I'm a part of the rally Middletown group. And I just want to say, first of all, thank you for all of your service that you're doing for the community. I do appreciate you listening to us, giving us a chance to speak, and I would really appreciate if, you know, the council members who haven't spoken on this, or even if you have, if you could please, you know, we would appreciate a discussion and just to hear your opinion about this and would like to, you know, I've been able to speak to President Rodriguez and Alderman Kleiner a bit, but I would like to speak to each and every one of you. We would like to speak to each and every one of you about this and talk more and hopefully, you know, come to some understanding. But I just would like to make all of you aware, if you haven't heard, you know, something occurred the last time that we were here outside of the meeting. Someone drove past and threw eggs at us. I actually had a pretty bad bruise from it, but, and some of my friends got hit in the face, and one, like, the eggshell was, like, close to the cornea. But anyways, I just want to say that I condemn any act of violence, and I think that, you know, the police are still investigating this, and we've been in contact with them. But I would just like to say, you know, if anyone disagrees, if anyone's watching this and they disagree with us, you know, please come and speak to us directly because that behavior is just not okay. And, you know, it did make me feel unsafe. I am of Jewish heritage, and I do think that this is, you know, something that could be a example of how Zionism is dangerous to Jewish people. But anyways, I would like to focus my speech now quickly on an important document that was published from the International Court of Justice. I highly recommend that the aldermen read this document if you do get the chance. It's very long, but there's a lot that is really important, so I'm just going to mention some of it from this document called "Legal Consequences arising from the Policies and Practices of Israel in Occupied Palestinian Territory, Including East Jerusalem." This is number 146. "The court considers that Israel's policies and practices, including its forcible evictions, extensive house demolitions, and restrictions on residence and movement, often leave little choice to members of the Palestinian population but to leave their area of residence. The nature of Israel acts, including the fact that Israel frequently confiscates its land following the demolition of Palestinian property for relocation to Israeli settlements, indicates that its measures are not temporary in character and therefore cannot be considered as permissible evacuations. According to various United Nations reports, settlers often subject Palestinians in occupied Palestinian territory to extensive violence which Israeli authorities fail to prevent or to punish." That's all I have from you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ahmed Katnali. I'm a resident of Poughkeepsie. However, I have friends and colleagues here, and I'm in support of the activity. Just want to tell you that I say all the time, I'm the misfortune, byproduct of my family because my father lost his wife to an illness because they were forced out of their home in Yafa, and my mother lost her husband in one of the massacres. And they got married, and I came to being five years after the Nakba, 1948. So the story of Palestine and subjugation of the Palestinians didn't start in October 7th or 1967, it's since the 1930s. So any justification that you hear that is Hamas, is this, is that, it's all propaganda because we still under the occupation, we still, my family lost 150 people from, you know, Palestinians have large families, so my extended family in Gaza, 150 people died. That's the one I know about. I don't know who else is still alive. If you look at the images in Gaza, you would think worse than a tornado or a bombing, or 2,000-ton bombs dropped. So I'm asking you to come in touch with your humanity, with your morality. I ask every one in this room to look at these and not get into politics, not think about all the extraneous things, the noise. Look at these images, if you see them on TV from a disaster, right away, I send the notion, my heart goes to those guys under that distress. You look at the images from Gaza, from the West Bank, and you're going to sit here and argue over whether we are small town or whether this is Israel, whatever, just for the sake of those people. They need a voice. So if your humanity, your morality, will call on you to be their voice, it call on you to be the conscious that stand with them because you're the one that can give them hope, okay? So it's not a matter of politics, guys. It's very simple. People are dying and been under oppression for so many years, since the 30s. It's time to stop this aggression. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mia, and you have seen me before in the previous meetings. One thing that I wanted to talk about and clarify that I feel like has kind of gotten lost in translation with everything, and I guess how the resolution itself has been perceived, I want to make it clear that nobody here, at least to my understanding, is coming with this resolution with any sort of, you know, disdain or dislike towards the Jewish community. I feel like that's a big rhetoric that is kind of placed on people who do advocate from kind of where we're advocating from. If you've ever heard of the trauma psychotherapist Gabor Maté, he was a Holocaust survivor, and he used to be a Zionist for a very long time in his life, and with time, and after kind of seeing the propaganda, what happened during Vietnam, it exposed him to realizing what was happening in Israel, and that encouraged him to dive into it more and learn more, and he eventually became extremely anti-Zionist. But what Gabor Maté likes to say is that he is not pro-Palestine, he is pro-truth. And one thing that he also likes to say is that there has been Jewish suffering, and then there is also Palestinian suffering, and it is important to hold both of those things at the same time. At least for me and my perspective, I can hold space for those two things at the same time. I'm not going to sit here and disregard any of that because that would be unfair, to not only talk about how the Holocaust has impacted the Jewish community and so many other instances prior and even after. And antisemitism is really a harmful thing, and in the same breath, that can also exist the same time that the community who suffered so greatly inadvertently ended up kind of doing the same thing to another people. And those people are now suffering in an immeasurable amount, and their pain is, and what's being done to them is being justified by the pain of another people. And neither of those things are fair, both of those things are allowed to exist at the same time, and a ceasefire says, "I can acknowledge your suffering, you can acknowledge my suffering, and we're sitting both here with it. What are we going to do moving forward? How do we stop this so we can move forward?" Because letting this continue is not helping anybody and only making both Jews and Palestinians more unsafe. I would also like to add that local government is very important in passing federal and foreign policy laws. You have had multiple instances where extremely large federal laws have been passed, from states individually passing those laws, and then it hits a plateau, and more and more states follow until it reaches a larger federal level, and that starts with us, and that starts here. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Adam Byrne. I live in Waywayanda, but I've practically grown up in Middletown. I go to SUNY Orange. Take a deep breath. Does that feel good? Good. A lot of folks having a hard time doing that right now. On the other side of the world, funeral pyres, as tall as I am, are being stacked with fresh corpses, young as newborns, old as dust, being burned not out of ceremony, but out of circumstance. The survivors, wherever they may go, have to have to deal with terror from above, terror that is spawned from American coppers. See, all of this comes from our, from our tax money, this destruction, this madness. And I'm not saying that we can pull a lever to stop it in this office right now, but we can do something. We can, we can stand up, we can, we can at least try. Because if you, if you look at that, if you look at, if you look at countless, if you look at countless dead, and you turn your back on it and pray that it goes away when you're not looking, then how is that any better than just blatantly supporting it? We're all human at the end of the day, and the best thing we can do is make sure our voices are heard, and that's what we're doing, and that's what we want you to do. City of Middletown can't bear to be complicit in this anymore, and we want you to stand for us. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, mayor?
Once again, I've made my position on the issue pretty clear, and I'm kind of curious, though, with a lot of the folks that come up here and say they're from, this gentleman here from Waywayanda, and the other guy from Bloomberg, maybe they can answer the question, "Have you appeared in front of the Waywayanda Town Board? I made the same request." Because all I hear is Beacon, Poughkeepsie, Newburgh, cities. What happened to the towns and villages in Orange County, or Ulster County, or Duchess County, where these folks are all coming from? A gentleman from Poughkeepsie, I didn't hear him mention that he went to any town in Duchess County, so I'm kind of curious why they don't focus on people that live outside the cities and get the message across, but next time when they come up, maybe they can tell us, give us a report on how many communities they've made a request of and how many communities have passed it, because, and that's just out of curiosity. But I said at the first meeting that credibility is important, and as you know, we have received literally thousands of emails on the other side of this issue, organized, the people identify themselves as a group, certain group, part of a certain group that were organized, basically the same email altered a little bit by each individual with a personal message. So there are two sides to this issue. We had many people come a few weeks ago to this meeting. I think there were about six or seven people who represented the other side of the issue, and I think I made myself perfectly clear on my position. But again, back to credibility. The first night I spoke, I talked about if you're part of an organization and you're coming to speak to the common council and lobby on behalf of a position, please identify yourselves as part of a group. Not that it's a bad thing, it's just so that we can get a picture of where you're coming from as a group or representing an organization. And that night, I made a statement that this effort here, the last few meetings, was organized by the Democratic Socialists of America. And at our last meeting, I think it was Amanda Crump, she questioned my credibility and my veracity in the statement that I made regarding the organization and the origins of this type of effort here focusing on the city of Middletown. In fact, up here on the board, you'll see that there are a few things that I would like to address from the last meeting regarding the things that were said mainly by the mayor. First of all, we are not introducing this through any sort of organization. It is simply myself and my partner, Jason, as well as everyone else from our community. This is the email that went out from Jason Nichman to many people. I received, I don't know if I received it directly or was forwarded to me by another individual, but it's an email from Mr. Nichman, and it outlines their position. The email also had attachments. This is the first one. "Pass a ceasefire resolution in Middletown." At the top of the page, you'll see the Hudson, Mid-Hudson Valley DSA. That is the Mid-Hudson Valley Democrat Socialists of America. So the origins of this request did come from the Democratic Socialists of America. When I stated it, they told me, "I'm not telling the truth," and then they came to the next meeting and said it again. The next page, once again, in the resolution, the proposed resolution they wrote, telling people, "Write to Middletown City Council and demand that Middletown join Newburgh, Kingston, Beacon, and over 100 cities across the United States in passing this resolution." So they have targeted Middletown as a community, yet he lives in Bloomberg, he lives in Waywayanda. The other guy from a few weeks ago lives in Chester. Why are they targeting Middletown with this message, "Organized by the Democratic Socialists of America," and then coming here and lying about it? And that's where you lose credibility in your argument. You're asking us to accept what you're saying about the Gaza War and that the facts as you see them are the facts that nobody else can dispute. Well, people are disputing those facts, and I don't know which side is correct on certain facts that you present, but I do know that this group came here and lied to the common council. It's right here in black and white on your screens for the people at home to see. So when you come to a meeting and you make representations that you are not part of an organized group, for whatever reason, why didn't they just say, "Yes, this was organized by the DSA"? These letters were, these sample letters were sent out to people in our organization asking them to send to you, and then the issue's over with, and then we make a judgment on whether we accept it or not accept it. But to come here and not only lie about it, but then to question my veracity when I chime in. But to come here and not only lie about it, but then to question my veracity when I challenged it, really raises an issue of credibility for the people who are making the presentation. So I think it was important for me to present this, not only to the council, but to the people at home, because we are giving them a forum. You know, most, not most, but quite a few town boards or city councils don't have a public session. We've welcomed them to come here and give them their three minutes each, speak on the issue, give them a platform. They're talking to people at home, just like we're talking to people at home. Maybe they're convincing people, maybe they're not, but that's not our decision on what they say. Our decision is that we gave them a platform, appreciate it. Don't tell me about my morals, that I'm morally lacking in certain areas because I don't agree with your position. When you come here and say, this is not part of the Democratic Socialists of America, we had no, they had nothing to do with this, yet your own written words and what you sent out to people indicate differently. So that's my issue on that. On the other issues facing the council tonight, we are going to need an executive session regarding litigation, and I would appreciate, at the end of the meeting, the council sponsoring a resolution for such. Thank you.
Any questions for Mayor? There's not, not, you could, after the meeting, you could talk to the mayor anytime you want. Right now, right now, it's the council, and we're going to move over. Point of order, point of order, point of order. You guys can talk to him as soon as the meeting's over. Any questions for the mayor? And we're moving on. Remarks of departments, economic development. Point of order, we're moving on. Economic development.
Just very quickly, we had a CDA meeting this evening, and we had some projects on there that the CDA approved. We're moving on with a couple more houses with our program. This Saturday, there's a community barbecue resource fair that Senator Scoofus is hosting, sponsored by the city of Middletown TD Bank as well, at Erie Way Park on Union Street from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And also, the farmer's market will be, the farmer's market will be going on as well, and it's, we're continuing with the SNAP program there as well. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any questions for Maria? All right, thank you, Maria. DPW Commissioner?
Good evening. I don't have anything for tonight, if you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Commissioner? Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Police Chief?
Good evening. Just a couple of quick things. This past weekend was our collaboration Back to School BBQ with the school district, Parks and Rec, fire department, and many other local entities. Outstanding turnout. Once again, it was a great community event. We appreciate all the support. Greatly appreciate the partnership with the school district. Definitely helps make this a lighter lift. I'd say several thousand people came out, beautiful day. Appreciate all the support and everyone coming out to see us. National Night Out, as we know, was canceled due to weather back in August. We do have it rescheduled. It'll be September 24th, 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., Davich Park. We're going to put a little twist on it, kind of make it more of like a fall-y festival-type event. We're looking forward to that, change it up a little bit. And just a brief overview of the incident that Ms. Crump referenced. Being that it is an ongoing, open investigation, I can't get into too many details at this time, but as soon as we do conclude it, I will be able to share more specific details. What I can tell you right now is we have identified suspects in that, both of which are teenagers, one of which does not reside in the city. It appears right now that they're on their way home from work and were acting inappropriately as teenagers. What I have currently today, and I have seven pages of reports so far, what I have right now, there is no evidence that it has anything to do with any discussion, any communication, any stances on anything that's been discussed in the Common Council meetings. That's just what I have as of today, based on what we have thus far. Sorry, I can't give you additional details at this time, but just want to let you know that we are aware and we are working on it. Anything else?
Okay. Alden Green?
Can you just the date for Night Out again? Because you said the 20th.
Night Out is going to be September 28th.
Okay.
Yes, I did misspeak on that.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to make sure for anyone watching. Thank you.
Saturday, September 28th, 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., Davich Park, real Davich Park.
Anyone else? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening, everyone. Just Saturday, October 19th, is our pumpkin party in the park in the back of Davich. We're going to have a trunk or treat. We're now accepting vendors, I'm sorry, not vendors, participants, organizations, city departments, nonprofits, and local businesses who would like to set up a trunk. There is a participant form that you have to fill out. You can find it online on the city website under the Recreation Department, or you can call us directly and we can email you the form. If your department cannot be a part of it, or your business, but if you'd like to donate candy, we are taking candy donations to help out all the trunks that are there, hand out the candy that day also. And I'd like to thank Donna Wolslayer and her family. The resolution tonight is accepting a donation in memory of Mr. Richard Wolslayer. We were honored that she chose the Middletown Recreation Department in lieu of flowers for his services. And on the resolution tonight is accepting that donation, we would like to thank her and her family for choosing us, and we're truly honored and humbled, and we can't wait to put that money to use and keep his memory alive over at Wolslayer Field. Any questions?
Alden McCliner?
Not a question. I just want to repeat that Ray Lynn came to our constituents' meeting and stayed for almost the whole meeting, and it was excellent. Thank you very much for that.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ray Lynn. City Clerk?
Good evening, everybody. I just want to thank the members of our community who participated in our citywide yard sale this past Saturday. We had about 60 homes throughout the city that took part. We had an overwhelmingly positive response this time. For the first time ever, we also opened up part of Erie Way Park for folks who didn't have their own yards or driveways to have a yard sale in, and that was wildly successful, too. Eileen and I have already started talking about planning for next year's, so keep it on your calendars. A new date will be forthcoming, as long as the council will continue to support it. I also just wanted to mention that we have been working with the Middletown School District to get, there are school board meetings televised through Channel 20, and they have started officially this week. So we just aired our first one, and we're looking forward to that partnership to increase transparency and make sure that folks in the community know what's going on in the school district. So thank you, Mr. Witt, and your colleagues at the school district for working with us on that. Thank you.
All right, any questions for our city clerk? All right. Public hearings and grievances?
Good evening. We have a public comment period tonight on the recommendation of the mayor to, for the city councils to review Section 460-14 of the city code as it pertains to overnight street parking between December 1st and March 15th. The council would like to hear your thoughts on the possible repeal and/or modification of this section of the code. The Common Council will receive comments on this matter during the September 17th meeting, on or near to 7:30 p.m. as possible, at 16 James Street in the Common Council chambers. Any in all persons wishing to be heard will be given an opportunity to speak either for or against the repeal or modification of the parking regulation, which was on our website.
Okay, at this time, public comments for the winter street parking regulations? Did we receive anything in writing?
We had nothing in writing.
Okay. Anybody from the council? All right. Do I have a motion to close the public comments? Alden Massey?
Second.
Second by Alden Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Remarks of Alden? Alden Massey?
Nothing.
Alden Witt?
Just one thing, thank you. This Saturday is the Erie Bell Game, Middletown against Port Jervis football, the continuation of the largest rivalry in the country in terms of games played. I think it's almost 150. I probably should know the number exactly. But it's a 1 o'clock start. You can come in as early as 11:30, and please enter only through the Carpenter Avenue entrance. Gardner Avenue is going to be closed. Thank you very much.
127 years of history.
I think the games are more.
Yeah, it's like 150 or something.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah. If I misspoke, yes. In terms of games, it's definitely the longest, but thank you. But you can't park coming through Gardner, you got to come Carpenter. So, thank you.
I was there for the original one. We know, you probably played in it. Neither the mayor would say that. Alden Green?
Thank you. Yes, thank you again to Ray Lynn, I was going to mention, you know, for coming to our constituents' meeting and for getting so quickly on some of those concerns. So we really appreciate that, and invite people to our next constituents' meeting, the second Monday of every month. So I look forward to seeing you then. Other than that, it was a phenomenal event at the park this weekend. I couldn't believe the crowd was so huge, but it was a great thing that Mother Nature complied with us and that we, you know, moved it a week. So kudos to whoever made that call, and we look forward to seeing everything else that's coming up.
Alden McCliner?
Thank you. I agree completely about it takes a village, and thank everyone involved for putting that on. Also, this Saturday, they are going to induct the 1961 undefeated Middletown football team from the class of '62 to the Wall of Fame. So there will be a ceremony at 10:00 a.m. on that day, and hopefully, some people from the team will get there. September 17th, I just want to recognize this because September 17th is Constitution Day, one of my favorite days of the year. It's the day that the people at the Constitutional Convention, the delegates all signed the Constitution. I think 38 out of 41 delegates signed it. Didn't get adopted formally, excuse me, until a couple of years later, but that was in the process of working on it and working out all the compromises. So I just want to read quickly, the preamble to the Constitution, which people forget. As I said last time, it was a product of the Enlightenment. It was an attempt for people to set up self-governing, and it begins with, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." And of course, when they asked Ben Franklin what he said, he said, "You have a republic if you can keep it." We're finding out this fall whether we can keep it. And on that note, today is also National Voter Registration Day. So make sure, I think the last day to register with a new address is October 26th. Last day to change your address is October 21st. But make sure you are registered, and it doesn't matter how you are registered, you can vote for whomever you want at the election. Thank you.
Alden Ray?
I have nothing this evening. Just go middies at the Bell Game and keep it here.
Alden Johnson?
Thank you, sir. So as an old school board guy, it really is gratifying to see the collaboration that has evolved with the city, thinking back to a time where there was really no collaboration whatsoever, and perhaps a degree of enmity. So Saturday's event, chief, school district, I went last year, I didn't have the mental fortitude to go this year, I assumed it was going to be standing room only. And being on Cable 20, I think that's about 20 years ago we had that conversation, it was all related to equipment, so kudos to Cable 20. Thank you.
Alden Johnson Fisswa?
Yes, good evening. Congratulations to the Commissioner of the DPW and their crew for the new, new Mountain Avenue, 1 million gallons of water tank. Beautiful. Job well done. Thank you, sir.
Alden Tobin?
I just want to condemn the former president's remarks about immigrants. I think it was dog whistle politics, and has no place in our society, basing on these totally made-up stories that fit their narrative, and I just want to say that. Thank you.
All right, new business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey authorizing the transfer of $8,390 within the senior center budget for additional attendees for senior trips.
Responsible Alderman Massey, second by Alden Witt. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
McCliner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin authorizing a $10,000 grant award from the New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services.
$100,000.
What did I say?
$10,000.
Oh, $100,000 grant award from the New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services.
Resolution responsible Alderman Tobin, second by Alden Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
McCliner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt authorizing the acceptance of a $1,455 donation in memory of Richard Wolslayer from a number of Middletown families.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, second by Alden McCliner. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
McCliner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray authorizing the acceptance of a $25,000 legislative initiative grant from Assemblywoman Eileen Gunther.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, seconded by Alden Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
McCliner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson authorizing a $4,000 budget transfer for the recreation parks trip to New York City for the Radio City Musical Christmas show.
Resolution responsible Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
McCliner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François authorizing a proposal from Clark Patterson Lee to update the city's MS4 permit.
Resolution responsible Alderman Jean-François, seconded by Alden Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
McCliner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François authorizing the declaration of Department of Public Works equipment as surplus equipment.
Resolution responsible Alderman Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
McCliner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson authorizing the declaration of 30 Church Street as surplus city property.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alden McCliner. Any discussion?